Good evening, everyone. The councilors. The hour being seven o'clock in November 23rd, I'd like to call to order the Laconia City Council meeting. Prior to this virtual city council meeting, I will read the introduction for electronic meetings. So bear with me. As Mayor of the Laconia City Council, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to watch the live YouTube video at https://www.youtube.com/LaconianH. Listen to this meeting through dialing a following phone number: 1-646-558-8656, or participate by the Zoom app. Webinar ID: 853-6486-9990, password: 941215. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the City of Laconia's website at www.laconianh.gov. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call (524) 3877, extension 249, or email at cityclerk@laconianh.gov. And D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states his presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. I'd ask the clerk, Cheryl Hebert, to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney.
Here and alone.
Thank you. Counselor Susie.
Here and alone.
Counselor Littman.
Here and alone in my home in Laconia, 70th Sarah Circle.
Thank you. Counselor Haynes.
Here, physically present in council chambers.
Counselor Hamel.
At home and alone.
Counselor Felch.
There's mute buttons on.
Here, at home and alone.
Thank you. Mayor Hosmer.
Mayor Hosmer, here. I'm present in City Hall in the mayor's office, and alone. Thank you. Moving right along here, I'd ask Counselor Hamel to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you very much, Counselor Hamel. Our recording secretary tonight is City Clerk Cheryl Hebert. I believe we are also joined on the call by City Manager Scott Myers, as well as Finance Director Glenn Smith. Moving on to item number seven, or seven A, which is the regular meeting minutes of November 9th, 2020. Minutes of the meeting were distributed to the council on Thursday, November 12th, 2020. They were submitted by Cheryl Hebert, City Clerk, with no changes or corrections submitted to the clerk. The minutes will be accepted as distributed. We have no consent and action items. On number nine, we have citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. If the, if there are citizens there that would like to speak to matters that are not currently on the agenda, now would be the appropriate time. I encourage you to raise your hand. City Finance Director Glenn Smith will recognize you. Because we have a fairly robust agenda, I would ask that the five-minute period that's allocated to citizen comments to be respected, so everyone can have an opportunity to speak.
The mayor, Dawn Johnson, has raised her hand.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, I should say Representative-elect Dawn Johnson, and certainly congratulations on your election to the State House, as well as your, I guess reelection to the school board. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. I'm excited for the adventure. I just wanted to, basically, Dawn Johnson, Ward 4, 199 Country Club Road, Laconia, New Hampshire. I just want to bring forth the question that I've asked previously, and it was stated in the paper last week, just to ask Mayor Hosmer exactly what your residency is, because, you know, it has nothing to do with political or anything like that. I just, I think the people have a right to know, and I just want clarification as to where your physical residency is, and where you live.
This is certainly an opportunity for you to speak. I'm happy to address that during the mayor's remarks coming up. So if you have something else you'd like to speak, you certainly have ample time to do so, but I appreciate the question.
No, that was it. Simple and easy.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate, again, you taking the time, not only to run and to serve the City of Laconia, but coming here tonight and asking the question and participating. Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, nobody else has raised their hand. Oh, excuse me. Charlie St. Clair has just raised his hand.
Welcome, Representative St. Clair. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening, everybody, and it's nice to see everybody here. Hope I didn't lose you. No, I didn't. I just wanted to, I know there's been a few questions, and I know that Representative-elect Johnson just put that to you, Mayor Fraser, but I just wanted, I'm sorry, Mayor Hosmer.
Hosmer, you're about a decade, you're a decade behind.
I know. The two just go with each other. But I just wanted to say that I've had a few people put this question to me, Mayor Hosmer, and my response has been, I understand you have a few properties, and quite frankly, you could have 30 properties, for all I care. You have a residence here in Laconia, and if you have several other homes, whatever you use them for, again, not a concern of myself, or any of the other residents I've spoken to on this. So again, I hope you're able to, I know you'll be able to answer that in your comments, but I just wanted to put that out there, because this has been a little bit of a conversation with a number of my friends in Laconia, and that we all pretty much feel the same way. It really doesn't matter how many homes you, or for that matter, any of the councilors own. The deal is, you got your residence here in Laconia, what you do after that, doesn't matter. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the time to join us tonight, Representative St. Clair. Thanks for your service to the city and to the state.
Mr. Mayor, Mike Borders has raised his hand.
Representative-elect Borders, congratulations on your election to the New Hampshire State House. Appreciate your willingness to not only run, but also to serve, and thanks for taking time to join us this evening.
Just to reiterate what Charlie St. Clair just said, Representative St. Clair, there is a difference between domicile and where, and owning property. So what it comes down to is, where you are physically residing or domiciling in is going to be the issue, not, I could own 30 properties, that doesn't make a difference, it's where you actually live that matters.
Anything else, Representative-elect Borders?
Nope, that's all I had to say. I mean, that's basically the general gist of everything. It's where you physically are eligible to vote, where you reside, now my dog's going nuts because he hates the phone, but that's basically what it comes down to.
Thank you very much for joining us and taking time to pose your question, and let your comments be known. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has raised their hand.
Okay, moving right along then, to number 11, nominations, appointments, and elections. This is a request to appoint a city council representative to the 2020 Deborah Binars Award Committee. The city council annually presents the Deborah Binars Award to a member of the community for their work with the youth of the Lakes Region. The award will be presented at an upcoming council meeting. Nominations are currently being sought for someone who has demonstrated a standard of excellence in their dedication to the children of our, in our community. The Binars Award Committee consists of three members, one representative each from the city council, the police department, and the school board. The committee meets once after all nominations have been received to choose the winner. This report was submitted by Nancy Brown. At this point in time, I would like to move, be looking for a motion, to appoint Counselor Felch as the city council's representative to the 2020 Deborah Binars Award Committee. Is there a motion? Counselor Susie, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney.
Yes.
Counselor Susie.
Yes.
Counselor Littman.
Yes.
Counselor Haynes.
Yes.
Counselor Hamel.
Yes.
Counselor Felch.
Yes.
No conflict of interest there, Counselor Felch?
No, I don't believe so.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Counselor Felch, for your willingness to serve.
Welcome.
Moving on to number 14, which is public hearings. Under 14A, this is a public hearing pertaining to the declaration of city-owned property at 30 Church Street, tax, map, and parcel 432-44.1.1, Laconia, New Hampshire, as surplus. Notice of this public hearing was made available in the November 13th, 2020 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, and posted at Laconia City Hall, Laconia Public Library, Laconia Community Center, and the SAU. The City of Laconia recently purchased a property at 30 Church Street, previously known as the Buzzell House, also known as the Rectory Campus of St. Joseph's. The property must be declared a surplus in order to eventually transfer the property to an interested buyer. The property will be marketed and advertised for sale to realize the highest and best use. So I would like to open the public hearing on this matter at 7:14 PM.
Mr. Mayor, nobody has raised their hand.
Trying to stretch it out to 7:15, bud. All right, I have 7:15, so I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:15. Thank you. Moving on to 14B, it's a public hearing pertaining to the declaration of city-owned property at 50 Church Street, tax, map, and parcel number 425-44-1.2, Laconia, New Hampshire, as surplus. Notice of this public hearing was made available in the November 13th, 2020 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, and posted at Laconia City Hall, Laconia Public Library, Laconia Community Center, and the SAU. The City of Laconia recently purchased a property at 50 Church Street, previously known as the Holy Trinity School. In conjunction with an expression of interest to realize the highest and best use, the property must be declared a surplus in order to eventually transfer the property to an interested buyer. So at this point, at 7:15, I would like to open the public hearing and await anyone who might, would like to speak about this. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. I'd like to declare the public hearing on this matter closed at 7:16 PM. Moving along to number 15, which is the mayor's report, and certainly as, in response to the questions posed this evening and the issues raised in the media, and also in the community, I believe it's my responsibility to address issues raised concerning my residency and do so rightly. It was 25 years ago that my wife and I took up residence in Laconia, and we have proudly called this home since then. I will say, at this point in time, people, as people know, I own two places, two residences right now, in the City of Laconia, recently purchased one with my wife in Guilford as well. The first place where I've spent almost the last 25 years raising my family is now for sale, and that's a place that, because it is for sale and being listed and being shown, we emptied the house of its contents and began the process of my wife moving some things over to a Guilford property, and myself moving some of my property and my belongings, our belongings, to a residence that I purchased, and we purchased in July 2020, on Parker Street. The property in Guilford is an investment property. What we intend to do with it, I'm not quite sure. Certainly the options of short-term rentals, or leasing the property, renovating and reselling it, or maybe just holding on to it for a retirement property, in the years to come are probably all options that are worth considering. But when my house, if my house on Summit Avenue sells, I intend to then move what remains in that house to Parker Street, and Parker Street will be my domicile and my residence. Laconia remains my residence and has never changed during this period of buying and selling properties and moving some things between houses or among houses. It is the, it's my official residence with the Department of Motor Vehicles. Laconia is where, and Parker Street is where I register my vehicles. It's where I intend to vote, and it's where I pay taxes. So not only am I there, living there, so I have a physical presence, it's where I intend to remain for an indefinite period of time. So I think those are all critical, and as people ask about what domicile is and what residency is, certainly my rights to vote in this city remain intact, and I have not changed my domicile or residency. My intent is to maintain my residency here in the city. And consistent with RSA 654-1, the City of Laconia is where I, more than any other place, have a physical presence and where I intend to maintain a single continuous presence, presence for domestic, social, and civil purposes relevant to participating in democratic self-government. Also consistent with RSA 640, 654, colon, 2, my domicile is not, our A domicile is not forfeited because of a temporary absence, if one return intends to return. So though I may have spent at various times, time in Guilford at the newer house, it has never been my intention to change my residence or change my domicile. So I certainly want to clear that, clear that up. You know, I certainly love this city. It's where my wife and I decided to live, chose to live and remain for almost 25 years now. It's where we decided to raise our children. I think we both have such great affection for this city and the people in this city. And so long as I have the privilege of being mayor, I'll remain a residence, a resident of this city. And not just a resident that meets the technical definition prescribed by law, but a resident and a citizen of this city that is continuously engaged in what goes on in the city. I take a great deal of pride in our city's ability to step up and take on its challenges, and also to seize opportunities and celebrate the great things that are happening here. I don't take this responsibility lightly, and I have spent a portion of, really, the last 10 years involved in public service, representing this city both at the state level and here in the city. And I intend to continue to do so. So it's not just living by the technical definition of residency or domicile. It's about the level of my action in this city, where my heart is, where my physical presence is, is, and so long as I am in this world, I intend to have a residence here in the city. I hope that helps clarify or answer some of the questions about domicile and residency. I think certainly what makes our community special, and I thought about it a lot as we approach Thanksgiving right now, not only just another Thanksgiving, it's a Thanksgiving in the year 2020, when so much has occurred in this world, in this country, in the state, in our community, and the challenges that we've had to rise to and overcome. I'm so proud of this city because of the community that we are. And when I think of the community, I think of the people, that I have the good fortune of representing as mayor, that I've had the good fortune of representing as a state senator. This is what makes this special for me. And it's really the community of people that regardless of where we live in the city, regardless of our income bracket, regardless of where we seek to practice our religion, or not practice our religion, regardless of whether we're new to this city, or we've multi-generations, we've been here, we are pulled together, and we hold this community together because we believe in this city. We believe in the possibility of this city, and we're willing to band together to rise to its challenges. I take that commitment, I take that responsibility very seriously, every single day. And as I said, it's a privilege to be here as the mayor and to continue to, and continue to serve, and I intend to do so certainly to the end of the term. Thinking of Thanksgiving, I just want to mention, one of the things that makes this city so special is when the city comes together to do something like it did this weekend, which was to decorate the entire downtown with garland, wreaths, and Christmas trees. I want to recognize Darrell Dawson from Keller House, who initiated a program of selling Christmas trees, having them sponsored by various people and businesses. On Saturday morning, there were probably about 50 people downtown, putting stakes in the ground, decorating trees, and will continue to decorate the trees downtown for the next few days until it's judged who has the nicest tree in downtown. You know, I think, to see these people show up first thing on a Saturday morning, and be willing to get dirty and to put up trees and to hang garland and do something as a community is one of those, one of those moments that I have to stand back and look at what goes on around here and feel so appreciative that I get to live in this community, and I get to represent this community. I also want to recognize the great folks at Celebrate Laconia. I'm thankful for all the work that they continuously do in this city to make this a special place, to do special things around the city, so we can continue to have a great deal of pride here. I also want to just say thanks as we enter into this holiday season, and certainly in the face of a pandemic that is going to come in the second wave. I want to say thanks to our essential workers who are out there. I want to say thanks to our teachers, our students, our parents, our administrative staff, our firefighters, and police officers. These will continue to be challenging times. Thank you for your service, thank you for your courage to get up and take on the challenges you're facing every day. It's people like you, you individuals, who stitch this community fabric together, and it continues to make, amaze me all the time. So thank you. That will conclude my mayor's remarks this evening, and we can move on to the next agenda Under number 16, which is the committee reports, looking at my fellow councilors here, saying, do we have any committee reports this evening? Counselor Hamel, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no reports, as said, but I would like to schedule a land and buildings committee report for items 16, D1, and D4, for December 14th at 6:30 for a preliminary discussion on those two items.
Thank you, Counselor Hamel. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, I'd move along to liaison reports. Any liaison reports this evening? Counselor Hamel, I knew I could count on you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your remarks about the city and the great work of a lot of people around here, and I'm also going to say, including the city council. I have some great news, I guess it's already been out there, about the Colonial Theater, but we have a official documentation sent by the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources, and I'll just read a small portion of it. It says, "I am pleased to inform you that the Colonial Theater, located in Laconia, New Hampshire, has been entered into National Registry of Historic Places on November 6, 2020 by the Parks and Services of the United States Department of Interior. A copy of the National Register nomination is on file at the Division of the Historical Resources, 12 Pleasant Street, Concord, New Hampshire." So by the hard work of a lot of individuals trying to get this Colonial Theater going, we've been recognized nationally, and the theater is now on the National Historic Preservation List.
Job well done, Counselor Hamel, another reason to be really excited about what's on the horizon here in the city. And thank you for reminding, I was remiss to say, you know, city councilors absolutely value the work that you do as well, and thank you very much. Thanks for reminding. Seeing no further liaison reports, under number 18, this is the opportunity for citizens to speak or to comment on current agenda items. And I'd wait for somebody to raise his or her hand, and wait to hear from you, Mr. Smith.
Mayor, nobody has raised their hand.
Thank you. Moving along to number 19, the city manager's report. Moving along to number 19, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two reports included in the agenda packet for this second meeting of the month, the first one being the projects updates. Not a lot left to go on in this construction season, we'll continue to do some underground utility work on the Jerky Bridge on Court Street, and so weather doesn't allow us to do that anymore. The other one is on that major water sewer and road upgrade project in the Lakeport areas. We did award the, the Water Department bid, and they may be starting construction, some construction on the cross-country portion that Water Superintendent Ben Crawford spoke of, so through, through earthen and not in the streets this year, so that'll be weather dependent. The, the bid was awarded to, I just lost it here. I gotta go up one little bit, there we go, Park Construction out of Fitzwilliam was the, was awarded the work to that. The other thing in the project update, and I know Mayor Hosmer and several counselors were in attendance, we had the official opening of the skate park, you know, Peachy Park, on Friday afternoon, and I probably been by four or five times prior to that when it was completed, it not officially opened, and several times over the weekend, and it is getting a tremendous response from folks on bikes, scooters, inline skates, skateboards, you name it, all ages are there, it's really well received, a lot of positive comments, I talked with some of the, the folks who are using it when I'm there, so, and a lot of people have commented, this seems like record time for a municipal project to get approved, funding in place, constructed and open. Somehow the stars just aligned for us, and really kudos to everybody involved on this, Amy and her team, certainly you, Mayor Hosmer, and the council for funding this. I think this ties into one of the council goals of, you know, encouraging, you know, family-friendly activities, trying to draw families and, and give opportunities for youth, and help build our community. I know you heard a couple of years ago from Mitch Hamel, who's a Realtor but also serves on our park commission, about how many times he got asked about a dog park, and one doesn't think of it, but that's one of those quality of life items that people are looking for and hoping to determine where they live. I put the skate park, obviously for, for a different clientele use, but I put the skate park right in there as providing, you know, youthful and adult activities, but really adding in another amenity, so very exciting to see the use that is getting. The second report that you have in your packet is the economic development report, focusing on that for a minute, the inflation, I'm sorry, the unemployment rate continues to drop, we, we lag about six weeks behind, so I do know that the October numbers have been released since this report was put together, but significant improvement from where the unemployment was back in the, the April, May, June timeframe. Obviously, when you compare the September numbers in this report for 2020 against the September numbers for 2019, we're still trending three or 4% as of that data, higher now than we were September a year ago, but again, there has been some significant improvement in the numbers through the October release at this stage, so we continue on a positive trend. The inflation numbers continue to be low, the November number again was released since this report was put together, I believe it also came in at 1.2%, maybe it was 1.3%, but I'm thinking 1.2. So we have one month, I'm sorry, so, so that was the October number, so we still have the November and this December months left to come, and unless something drastic happens one way or the other, we'll, we'll be in that 1.2, 1.3% range for the consumer price decks, and that'll be one of the components for our tax gap calculation. I want to report out to the council that with the COVID going on this year and a lot of wedding ceremonies being delayed this year, many of them are being moved to 2021, and finding that Saturday dates are already booked, so the, the silver lining, if you will, it was a lot of our resorts and wedding venues are getting added bookings, and some of them are showing up on Sundays now, which is a less traditional date, because of our loudspeaker noise ordinance runs till 10 o'clock on the Fridays and Saturdays, but only nine o'clock on a Sunday. We do occasionally receive requests to extend that to the 10 o'clock so that folks can have their DJs or their bands or whatever, so I have approved one more wedding at the Margate on a Sunday evening to do the loudspeaker until 10 o'clock. The final piece of news I have for you tonight is hot off the press as of after the three o'clock hour this afternoon, we finally have our tax rate set. City staff does all the work, and we work with the Department of Revenue Administration at the state level to help set the rate, they do the verifying and ensuring up of our numbers. So the, let's put it in perspective, so the tax rate that we had for the fiscal year that we just ended was $20.59 per thousand, based on the budget that we adopted, and not knowing the full increase in citywide assessments, we had anticipated the tax rate going up to $20.96 per thousand, which was, would have been a 1.8% increase, which ties into the, the tax gap formula in and where inflation ran for the prior year. Because we've added, and depending on what number you look at, whether you include utilities and the citywide assessed valuation or not, we've added $125 million or a little north of that in new assessed value this past year, and that's what Steve Hamilton spoke to on, where we've seen some of the growth in residential properties waterfront, in particular, some areas of the condominium market. So based on that new value coming in and factoring that into the calculation, the new tax rate is going to be set at $19.72 per thousand, so just about a dollar 20, a dollar 25 lower than we had anticipated. And again, there, there's no real way to know that because all these factors come into it after we adopt the budget. The other positive piece to that is many properties have seen an increase in value since last year's assessment, and for most people, real estate probably is, is one of their largest holdings, if not their largest holding. I, I know you're well versed with this line, but the tax rate means nothing, because here we see the tax rate went down, values went up, it all determines, you know, what, what your final tax bill looks like, but we believe that for the average single-family home in Laconia, they will see a minimal if any increase, and obviously there are some pockets, like I mentioned condominiums, waterfront depreciated at greater value than that, but if you figure our tax rate came in 4% lower now than it was for the prior fiscal year, that means your valuation could be up 4%, and all things kind of come out in the wash. So again, every property is a little bit different. We've had the old to new values posted on the city website for several weeks now for people to be able to look at and ask questions if they have any. We will be working to get the tax bills out, if we get them fast-tracked, and everything works very smoothly, and getting almost 10,000 bills printed and in envelopes and stamped into the post office, they could, they could be out as early as Wednesday. Our anticipation is it'll be no later than a week from today, so that would be Monday, November 30th, with a due date at the end of December, so all within this calendar year for folks who may continue to itemize mortgage interest as a deduction. So I'd stop there and take any questions anyone may have on the reports or any of the other items I had for you tonight.
Looks good. Counselor Littman, do you have a question? I know you're unmuted, I didn't know if you were waiting.
No, just thanks Scott for sharing that tonight, and appreciate everybody's work to keep in the tax rate in a good place relative to where it could be.
Yeah, a good team, so Glenn Smith, obviously Finance Director around here, but Christine Bluen from the school, and, and the school certainly played a big role in, in getting this set all together as well.
Thank you, Scott, and team. Scott, does that finish what you're going to speak to, or should we move on to new business now?
If there are no more questions, I am all set, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Seeing none, we will. So moving along to new business 20A, request for a driveway permit on a Class 6 road pursuant to NA, New Hampshire RSA 674, colon, 41, property on a Class 6 road must have permission from the city council in order for the code department to issue a building permit, and the property owner needs to produce a notice of liability waiver to be filed at the registry. Catherine Hull, property owner on Hilliard Road, Tax Map 178, 107, 6, is requesting the city council authorize the code department to issue a building permit, and for the city manager to sign the notice of limits of responsibility and liability regarding property abutting a Class 6 road. The applicant should also sign a letter of understanding recognizing they will be responsible for any maintenance of the section of Hilliard Road they will be using that is classified as Class 6. This report was submitted by Dean Trefethan. So Scott, what, what's your preference here? Would you like to discuss this at this point, or would you like to make the motion and then open it up for discussion?
We can take questions here, it's just a pretty straightforward process, where you as the legislative body in the city need to grant the permission to, to build a house on a Class 6 road, some, some review of the actual lot and, and making sure there's no impact on additional impervious surface area and damage to the road and other abutting properties goes into it, but staff has looked at that and sees no reason the council should not approve that tonight.
Thanks, Scott.
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor, if you accept it.
I accept it, is there a second?
A second. Second.
Counselor Fauch is the second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney. Counselor Cheney, you're muted.
You may have stepped away, maybe we should move and circle back to him.
Counselor Susie.
Yes.
Counselor Littman.
Yes.
Counselor Haynes.
Yes.
Counselor Hamel.
Yes.
Counselor Fauch. Counselor Cheney.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Moving on to number 20B, this is, the topic is to amend the city code, Chapter 5-30, Conservation Commission, Section B, amending number of members. The Conservation Commission in the recent past has had issues achieving a quorum at scheduled meetings. The commission has discussed the issue and has voted to recommend changes to the ordinance that defines their membership. The commission is recommending going from seven full-time members and no alternates to five full-time members and up to three alternates. This change would reduce the number of members needed to achieve a quorum and would allow the council to appoint alternate members. There is no fiscal impact on the city, this was submitted by Planning Director Dean Trefethan. We're looking for a series of three motions here. First is a move to waive a reading of this ordinance in its entirety and to read by title only, so made by Counselor Haynes, seconded by Counselor Fauch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Susie.
Yes.
Counselor Littman.
Yes.
Counselor Haynes.
Yes.
Counselor Hamel.
Yes.
Counselor Fauch.
Yes.
I vote in the, in the affirmative, that motion passes. The second motion we'd be looking for is to move a first reading of ordinance 2020-5-30-B, amending membership of the Conservation Commission.
I'll make that motion.
Second is.
So made by Counselor Haynes, seconded by Counselor Susie, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Susie.
Yes.
Counselor Littman.
Yes.
Counselor Haynes.
Yes.
Counselor Hamel.
Yes.
Counselor Fauch.
Yes.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes, and the final motion we'll be looking for is to move to schedule a public hearing on December 14th, 2020, during the regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption. So made by Counselor Fauch, seconded by Counselor Haynes, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Susie.
Yes.
Counselor Littman.
Yes.
Counselor Haynes.
Yes.
Counselor Hamel.
Yes.
Counselor Fauch.
Yes.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes, thank you, thank you, counselors.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interrupt, so I just reached out to Counselor Cheney, he could hear us, but he's having trouble, a problem getting his microphone unmuted, so he is just gonna log off and rejoin the Zoom to see if that corrects the problem.
Thank you very much, Scott. I, I may pause for just a moment, just, just as a courtesy to Counselor Cheney, to make sure, I don't want to rush this if he's got something to say about what the work that in front of us here.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if Mr. Smith can unmute as being central control of the Zoom meeting.
I, I did call upstairs and ask, ask Lemon, and he, he cannot, he can ask someone to unmute, but he cannot do them, he can mute somebody though. So it looks like Counselor Cheney has just logged off from where he's on the screen, so hopefully he's attempting to come back in here and will wait and see how the launch And just looking at the agenda, Mr. Mayor, I think your next item 20C is just approving the second half sewer warrant, which isn't typically too controversial, so that might be a safe one if you wanted to move forward.
Fair enough, we'll move on to 20C, which is the second half sewer warrant, per Chapter 189-50C, collection of a flat-rate sewer accounts are collected by the tax collector, seeking to collect right now $141,252. Staff recommends that this be approved and sign the 2020 second half sewer warrant. This was submitted by Lindsay Allen, our tax collector, so we're looking for a motion to approve the 2020 second half sewer warrant, so made by Counselor Fauch, seconded by Counselor Susie, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Susie.
Yes.
Counselor Littman.
Yes.
Counselor Haynes.
Yes.
Counselor Hamel.
Yes.
Counselor Fauch.
Yes.
You're muted now, Counselor Cheney.
There you go.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Is, is that a yes?
It was a yes.
Okay, thank you.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes, thank you, counselors, welcome back, Counselor Cheney. Moving along to number 20D, which is the Green Laconia Petition to Laconia City Council. This is representatives of the Green Sanctuary Committee of the Unitarian Universalist Society of Laconia met recently with me in the office, and the committee has developed a Green Laconia petition, which is attached to your packet this evening. This information is provided to the city council for discussion and consideration. I will turn it over to perhaps Mr. Andrews, if he's with us, to make the presentation. You know, this was, I had an opportunity to sit with Ernie Bowns, David's brother, as well, last week to discuss this. I know this is a, an issue that Counselor Bowns discussed with me early, early this year, and then had to, took a backseat in that first week, the second week of March with COVID, and he had made it a point during the period of COVID, we'll say in the spring, to, that he was interested in bringing it back at some point to the committee once we got through what we were facing. what we were facing at the time. So the fact that it's come back is certainly something I know that Counsel Bounds would appreciate.
Mr. Mayor, I am here if you can hear me.
I most certainly can. Hello, Roger. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Hosmer, Mr. Myers, members of the Laconia City Council and friends. I am Roger Andrews, a veteran, former teacher of physics at West Point, and a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church founded in 1836 and located on Pleasant Street. I am here today to present a Green Laconia petition in memory of David Bounds, who passed away on July 4th of this year. David worked with our committee, our Green Sanctuary Committee, on preparation of this petition. David is survived by sons Ryan and Patrick, daughter Emma, brother Ernie and his wife Colleen, a sister, Dr. Barbara Mikleche, and many beloved nieces and nephews and dear friends, some on this Zoom. Next chart, please. A little bit about David. David was born in Laconia on April 12th, the son of Hugh and Eya Markin N. Bounds. He did much in, he had a characteristic passion for justice. He served in the New Hampshire Public Defender's Office from '82 to '86, and he had private practice in Laconia with the valued help of his paralegal, Anara Kessler. David had a passion for revitalizing downtown Laconia and also a passion for social justice. He served, as you know, of course, on the Laconia City Council. He worked for the renovation of the Colonial Theater. He promoted and performed in theater productions. And, which I was fortunate to see on one occasion, he performed at local children's parties as Stubbles the Clown. David was a member of our Unitarian Church on Pleasant Street. He's a church moderator and lawyer, and he assisted with the Laconia petition process addressing climate change. Next chart, please. Why are we concerned about the climate? Why was David concerned about the climate? Climate change is happening, and I think that most of the world recognizes that. Global warming is a threat multiplier, making climate extremes even more extreme. Why is that happening? Greenhouse gases form a blanket in the atmosphere, which prevents heat from escaping into the atmosphere, raising the Earth's temperature. Greenhouse sources put these greenhouse gases into the atmosphere, and then natural sinks take the greenhouse gases out of the atmosphere. The problem is that about 60% of the greenhouse gases stay in the atmosphere, making the blanket thicker, and hence, the Earth's temperature gets warmer, and we have global warming. Next chart, please. What the Green Laconia Petition intends to do is to have, present actions or suggestions that can be done in Laconia to economically remove greenhouse gas contributions to global warming while improving the economy, health, and attractiveness of Laconia. So some of the actions that we have in our petition are as follows. Improve energy efficiency of buildings. By improving the energy efficiency, we can reduce energy costs and also the emission of carbon dioxide. Another one is obtaining electricity from renewable sources. And we suggest the goal that by 2030, we try to have 100% of the electricity that the community and city is using come from renewable sources. Of course, this is only a goal, but we have to have a direction to be moving in the right direction. Another suggestion is reducing fossil fuel powered vehicles. Next chart, please. Another suggestion is encouraging tree planting and forestry preservation. What this would do is increase the natural sinks for carbon dioxide, reducing the greenhouse gases that are in the atmosphere. Another is encouraging bicycling programs to provide transportation, improve health, and reduce carbon dioxide emissions. One suggestion might be to extend the Wild Trail Extension out to the state school property. Another one is looking at the state school property. Why not have some environmental goals for the state school property that would say that the state school property development would be as close to carbon zero as possible? Another one is forming a Green Laconia Coordinating Committee that can work with the mayor and the city manager and other organizations to collaborate and assist the Laconia City Council in moving forward with a Green Laconia program. Next chart, please. I struggled with this a little bit because David didn't give me all the information he had. But some of the suggestions for the city council are add to your master plan. In your master plan, you have a terrific vision that talks about benefiting current and future residents, businesses, and seasonal guests. Why don't you include in that including actions to mitigate climate change? Another possible possibility is adding a principle to your current master plan that says continuous movement of having fewer net greenhouse gas emissions contributing to global warming with a goal of being carbon zero by 2050. And then finally, establishing a Green Laconia to research and make recommendations to the Laconia City Council and city manager. All of this work should be fiscally sound. It's complicated, but it can be done in a fiscally sound way. In the reading that I've done, I've seen towns in New Hampshire and other states who have done things like developed solar arrays so that they could get electricity inexpensively for their city. And these solar arrays were maintained by city employees. Gentlemen, I tried to put that together in a summary. I very much appreciate your attention. I hope that these suggestions are useful, and I thank you very much. I am very pleased and proud to be able to present this Laconia, Green Laconia petition to the city council tonight. Thank you. Do I have any questions?
Mr. Andrews, I thank you very much for your hard work and commitment to legacy of our friend and former colleague, David Bounds. Certainly, we knew that this was a passion of his, and I think it's, it is the document that you provided in the slideshow should be an impetus for us as a council to have further discussions to see really what is it that we can do. And you have my commitment that I will work to create a green council to begin those discussions, and so we can perhaps work towards maybe some recommendations that the city or the city council can consider, perhaps consider adopting moving forward. So hopefully, you would be willing to participate in that council as it takes formation.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As I said before, there are solutions that are fiscally sound. And unfortunately, well, fortunately, but these things have to be looked at in kind of a medium range. You know, what is the buyback in the next five years and those kinds of things? So it's really, I think, a great opportunity for the city council to move ahead.
Thank you. Looking towards my colleagues here, counselors, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Andrews?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Littman, yes.
I have an overall comment on this and the next couple of agenda items. You know, I think one of the, first of all, David Bounds is someone I appreciated a lot, considered a friend, and, you know, we didn't necessarily agree on every item, but we always were able to, and still come back to the table and work together. I'd like us to, in the instance of this petition and naming situations, I think we really ought to come back as a council and refer to the subcommittee to come up with some criteria in terms of how we look at these things. You know, there, with the city council, we've tried to be nonpartisan, and, you know, while I think it's presented in that fashion, wouldn't necessarily be intrigued by the entire community in that way. And so I guess what I'm concerned about in the case of this petition is that we have some criteria in terms of how we consider petitions. And with respect to namings, I think that we need some criteria because while all of the names put forward are, you know, very honorable people and people that deserve recognition, I think to be fair about it and to be consistent about it, and so that we have a common approach, I would suggest that we move in that direction, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Littman. I tend to agree, and I think all of these, the next couple of items as well deserve further consideration, but perhaps through either a work group or referred to the committee and establish that criteria so there is a consistency in the work that we're doing. I certainly would support that idea as well.
And I would also add, just in terms of the current matter before us, I think it would be helpful, maybe if the manager would be willing to just come up with a list of things that sort of fit the criteria of the petition that we've already done. And I can think of just a couple major ones. For example, when we redid the lighting plan for the entire city, all the streetlights were energy savings and cost efficiency. We've got a solar array coming on, on one of the reclaimed properties from a dump situation that could no longer be used. And certainly, the council's support of walking and biking paths in the city and, you know, how the middle school was constructed, work done in the high school, all were areas where that sort of mid-range look of things in terms of how we could, you know, both improve the efficiency and the economy in which we conduct city business and use city resources. And certainly also with respect to the lakes, we've invested in, you know, dealing with milfoil and other exotic weeds and have made investments there. So I do think there's a lot of things that we do do that work on economy and efficiency and are good for the environment as well as the taxpayers' property tax rate. But I do think criteria are important, so we don't miscalculate a step in terms of how we deal with petitions and with naming.
So there's no motion associated with the Green Laconia petition. What I'd like to do is have a follow-up meeting with Scott about what the logical next step is at this point. So I don't know if there are any other counselors who'd like to comment on this particular agenda item or not, but certainly Counsel Littman, you have great suggestions.
Yeah, one quick one was, and I certainly encourage you to talk to the manager about whether it's a good one or not, but, you know, government operations is one spot that it could go, or you could have some special committee. So I'll let you and the manager decide what you think's best way to proceed.
Okay. Counsel Hamel.
Yes. I just wanted to concur with Henry on what he said about pretty much everything, and I agree with it. I think a lot of our projects that we've done in the past have been, you know, we really tried to make them energy efficient. And then lately, within the last couple of years, we upgraded a lot of our buildings, you know, to LED lights. And also at the Colonial Theater, we're doing the same thing, trying to find everything that we can, energy efficient from boilers to, you know, the lighting, the heating, air conditioning, everything. We've really tried to make an effort in that area. So, you know, then we also, in Laconia, we have our Arbor Day where we plant trees, you know, in different areas of the city. We've been doing that for a long time. The city has gotten numerous awards for their Arbor Day. And, you know, I think the city overall has gone in a great direction. Like Henry said, we've changed all our incandescent streetlights to LED, which saved half of our electric bill on that, and it's going to be a real good payback. So I agree, and I also agree on the naming of different properties. I think that we need to have a committee to look at that and see what kind of requisites or whatever you want to call them that would be needed to do that. And I agree that, you know, both these names are great, but I just think we need to have some kind of a list of things that would qualify, I guess you could say. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hamel. So I think we can just leave this here. We don't have to have a motion, Scott, in regards to the Green petition. But moving along to 20E and 20F, I guess we'll take them individually and ask that they be tabled.
I think Counsel Cheney had a hand up before you may want to.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't see you, Counsel Cheney.
Oh, that's quite right, Mayor. I want to also echo my support for Counsel Littman's comments. I considered Dave Bounds a friend of, in accepted 30 years, and despite his profession, I considered him honest and honorable. And so it would be difficult for me to oppose something that is done in his honor. That said, I think we need to enter this carefully. I think you've already established that for the night, so I won't say much more. But I do have concerns that I would be disappointed to see us rush to establish these goals without additional thought.
Thank you, Counsel Cheney. Any other comments in regards to 20D? Seeing none again. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. We're going to move along to number 20. We're going to move along to number 20E, which is the request to name the Laconia Community Center gym. And Scott, is the tabling motion, is that how we should handle this? If we want to study this a little bit more and put a criteria in place?
Yeah, I think you would say that you look to table it and refer it to a work committee for establishing further criteria.
That's exactly what I'd say. And I get a motion in that respect. Thank you, Counselor Fauch. Seconded by Counselor Cheney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Sucey?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Number 20F, a request to name the Laconia Skate Park. Will there be a motion by Counselor Fauch to refer this to a committee or table it? It's a tabling motion, right? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Haynes. All those in favor, clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Sucey?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you, councilors, for your work on that. Moving on to number 21, which is our unfinished business. This is a request to declare city-owned property at 30 Church Street, Laconia, New Hampshire, as surplus. This is, the church street is the Buzzio House. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the request made to declare city-owned property at 30 Church Street, tax, map and parcel numbers 432-44-1.1 as surplus.
So moved.
Made by Counselor Sucey, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Further discussion?
Good, Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Lippman.
Just for the benefit of the public, since we didn't have, you know, testimony at the hearing, just in terms of what this ends up meaning, just so we can be clear for the public, in support of the motion, I just want to, for the benefit of the public, just describe what's going on here.
I think that's entirely appropriate. Mr. Myers, would you just like to explain that?
Yes, so at the first reading on this, the council indicated that they are interested in putting their property up for sale with a commercial realtor and market it, but also indicate that it is not necessarily 100% based on the highest asking price or someone meeting the asking price, it's also what the use is and future use type of thing. So that's a little bit of a twist in this, but we, you know, certainly have conveyed that. We reached out and placed an advertisement for commercial services of a realtor and did direct mailings or emails to four local firms. Most recently, you may have seen the news that in the last week or two, but Weeks Commercial has merged or blended in with Remax Bayside, and they have combined for one commercial division now. So the commercial division of Remax now includes Weeks Commercial. And pending an affirmative vote tonight, they will be the listing agent, and we do have a walkthrough scheduled with that firm for tomorrow morning, assuming an affirmative vote tonight. They put together a proposal regarding how they will market and advertise and where they will do that, and we were very pleased with the proposal, and that will be the next steps, assuming an affirmative vote tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this matter?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Haynes?
Just curious, will the entire council have a final say on how the property is disposed of?
Yes, I would bring any offer back to the City Council, and it would probably be something we would go into a non-public session to discuss because it's sale or transaction of real estate, and there would be negotiations involved.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Sucey?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you. Moving along to number 21B, which is the request to declare city-owned property at 50 Church Street, former Holy Trinity School in Laconia, New Hampshire, as surplus per Section 183-7 of the city's code. City Council held a public hearing earlier this evening to accept public comment regarding declaring the property described as surplus. At this point, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the request to declare city-owned property at 50 Church Street as surplus. Summed by Counselor Hamel, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Sucey, is there any further discussion on this matter? Counselor Sucey?
The question to the city manager, is the same particulars for the church and for the school building as it is for the rectory?
No, so again, it was discussed a few weeks ago, we have put the school building out because we think it's a little bit more of a unique property, and someone's going to be creative in there and probably invest some money that this went out to what we were referring to as an expression of interest. So basically, we've identified the parcel, we've identified that we were going to subdivide some area off of the back, so the parcel as it stands today will not contain all of the parking spaces that are there, that those are the shared spaces, that's the whole reason the city purchased those in the first place. And we have asked people to identify what they would pay for the building, what their investment will be in the building, and what their end use will be, because I think the feeling there is, there's a much wider array of possibilities of things that we may want or may not want on that. It's a prominent intersection. We know it's going to need some rehabilitation, renovation, improvements in there, and I think what the end result was, at least I heard, was very important to the City Council. So that has actually been advertised on our city purchasing page, and advertised in the newspaper after the council meeting of two weeks ago, that this would be available for expressions of interest. We did advertise that at a minimum, there would be two times pre-scheduled that people could come and walk through the property when one of our city staff would be over there with them. Those two dates of coming on, at the first date, we had two separate entities came and did a walkthrough. The second scheduled open house, if you will, for people to walk through, was held towards the end of last week, I can't remember, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, somewhere. No one showed up, so at this point, we did have two entities come through, and I believe both have at least made some follow-up inquiries at this point. I don't recall the exact date, but somehow the date of December 12th or 13th sticks in my mind for when proposals would be due. They don't have to be fancy, they can be just general glorified bullet points of what someone's looking to do and how they're going to make it work. And again, any of those types of proposals we receive will be brought to the City Council for further action.
The other, if I may, some more?
Yeah, absolutely.
While the building is sitting there, I expect it's probably being heated and maintained?
Yes, I've worked with Amy Levisik over at our Parks and Facilities, they've done a complete walkthrough, we're maintaining temperature in there so that everything, as far as pipes and that type of stuff, is protected.
Okay. Is it your plan to put this also with the Remax team, or we're just handling this separately?
No, this is just going out for anyone to make an offer. So when I first got to the city back in 2011, the old police station had been sitting vacant for years, and the council and I worked together and came up with this approach of tell us what you would do and what you would make an investment. And at that time, the Benny Media Corporation came in, and we're going to make that a regional hub for news and both of television and radio nature, and talked about how much of an investment they would make in the property and a number of employees working there. So at that point, I believe we sold that building for a dollar based on having the protections and the guarantees of what would be invested in that building and to get it back on the tax rolls. So this would be a similar approach, we would look at the use and what someone's willing to pay for it, but this will not be listed with a realtor. We think this has got to have someone come in with some creativity, and I don't feel that we could determine a price, an asking price for that, not knowing what somebody may feel they have to come in and invest in a building of that age and maybe just a little bit of lack of maintenance over the years, and it's just a little bit tired.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Sucey. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Sucey?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you, councilors. Moving along to number 21C, which is the third reading to amend the city code, Chapter 119, Building Construction, and Chapter 135, Electrical Standards, to update the adopted versions to current versions so the city is in line with the state's standards. As we know, and as we've discussed, I believe at the last meeting, the state recently adopted updated versions of several building codes for the 2015 versions and electrical codes to the 2017 versions. The city is currently on much older versions, which causes confusion with contractors that work on multiple municipalities as they are now used to the state-adopted versions. Additionally, and occasionally, state inspectors will do random inspections in the city, and they are expecting work to conform to the state-adopted versions and not the city's older versions. The code department will start enforcing the new standards with any new permits issued after January 1st, 2021. Between now and then, we will, the city will be advising contractors, the new codes will be in effect and pointing out any differences in their work versus the new standards as an educational opportunity. This item was tabled at the November 9th, 2020 council meeting. So I'd be looking for a motion right now to remove this item from the table. So made by Counselor Fauch, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Lippman? Yes, please.
I think I had asked for it to be tabled to make sure that we had worked out procedurally how projects that were in, already approved and in process were going to be handled. I wonder if we could ask the manager to speak to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you for the question. I will actually defer to Dean Treford, then our planning director, who does have his hand raised, and Glenn will unmute him at this point, and Dean can address that for you. It's also in the cover staff report that he resubmitted as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Our intent, we have been talking with contractors for a few months now about what some of the differences would be. They're not major, and as I mentioned in the staff report, most of our contractors work in other municipalities, so they have already been exposed to the 2015 standards. So any building permit that is already issued and underway will be done and inspected under the current versions that we, that have been approved, that are in effect right now. Starting January 1, any new permit that is issued would follow the new standards. So on January 2nd, if someone is 75% through their project, they're under the old standards, and that's what we will inspect to. Only someone who's completely starting brand-new on January 2nd or after will be subject to the new standards.
Thank you. I think that was what we were trying to make sure was the case.
Thank you, Counselor Lippman. Are there any, is there any further discussion? The motion is to remove this item from the table. Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Sucey?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes, and the item is now removed from the table. Right now, we'd be looking, I'd be looking for a motion to waive the reading of these ordinances in their entirety and to read by titles only. So made by Counselor Hamel, you're slow, Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Cheney, you were almost third there. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor, Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Sucey?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
Six votes in the affirmative, and that motion passes. The second motion I'd be looking for is to move a third reading of Ordinance 2020-119-10, Building Construction, and Ordinance 2020-135-1, Electrical Standards. Made by Counselor Fauch and seconded by Counselor Cheney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Sucey?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
With six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. And finally, I'd be looking for a motion to move to approve Ordinance 2020-119-10, Building Construction, and Ordinance 2020-135-1, Electrical Standards, made by Counselor Fauch, seconded by Counselor Cheney. All right, all right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Sucey?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
That's six votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. I just want to thank you, Counselor Lippman, for your request to table that item and get some clarification, appreciate your thoughts on that. So we're right along to number 22, which is counselor comments. Counselor Cheney?
Thank you, Mayor. I realize that some were concerned about the appearance of my having a conversation with someone when I was supposed to be alone, and I beg your forgiveness, my wife and I were arguing about dinner, or about whether I was entitled to dinner, maybe inappropriate, but in any case, it was not some nefarious discussion about items on the agenda. It was whether I was going to get fed tonight or not. Thank you.
We've won.
Yeah, we know what Boston House is.
To ask, Bob. You know, we knew.
Yeah. Hamburg Hamburg, huh?
Yep.
Any other counselor comments? Seeing none this evening, I want to wish all of you a happy and a safe Thanksgiving. I know this year is going to be different than previous Thanksgivings, but I want everyone in the city staff to have a nice Thanksgiving as well. So look forward to seeing you after the Thanksgiving holiday. Thanks for your patience tonight, and...